It's 6:45, we'll call the public hearing order. First, please call and roll.
Ms. Marika.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Hamm.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Hick.
Here. The purpose of the public meeting is being held to gather public input in regard to the proposed designation of a redevelopment project area and the proposed approval of redevelopment plan and project in relation thereto for the proposed Peatone Downtown Tax Increment Financing District. And at this point, for the summaries, we will turn it over to Mary.
Real quick before we do that.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
The reason why trustee Jones and President Cross are not here is because they have properties involved in the district, and according to the law, they cannot be involved in any discussion, voting, or approval of a TIF district where they own property. So that's why they are not in the room, and they will not be in the room for any discussions regarding the TIF at any point in time in the future either. Thanks.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Thompson. I'm with Kane McKenna and Associates and act as the TIF consultant for the village. So what we're going to do tonight is go through the process, what got us to this point this evening, tell you a little bit about the TIF, and answer any of your questions. So for the record, Madam Clerk. Public hearing concerning the potential designation of the downtown TIF district. Public hearing is being held pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Act and in conformance with the Illinois TIF Act, the village of Peatone has completed the following procedures in connection to the proposed designation of the downtown TIF district. So on September 29th, Kane McKenna submitted the draft plan and eligibility report to the village, to the clerk's office actually, to be placed on file in accordance with the Act. On December 11th, the village board adopted the public hearing resolution, setting the date for the joint review board and the public hearing. On December 13th, 2017, legal notices regarding the public hearing were sent out by certified mail to all the affected taxing districts and the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. On December 13th, 750-foot letters were sent out to residents within 750 feet of the boundaries of the TIF district in accordance with the Act. On January 4th, the village held the joint review board meeting with the affected taxing districts, the school board, the parks, the libraries, forest reserves, county, et cetera. Legal notices regarding the public hearing were sent out by certified mail to all the property owners of record on January 22nd, which is why I'm assuming all of you are here. Publication of the legal notice regarding the public hearing was placed in the local newspaper in the manner prescribed by state law on January 22nd and again on January 23rd. We have to publish it twice. So the next steps after this meeting are the final adoption of the TIF ordinances. In order to get there, we have to have this public hearing to go through what we did, which is what we did to get here. We examined an area that I'm sure you're familiar with, you've seen it, it was enclosed in your notice, a map, an area that we generally describe as Main Street, Railroad Street, Corning, and other village properties within that proposed area. We looked at the properties to establish eligibility criteria for a TIF district. The village's goals here are to redevelop the downtown area, and in order to do that, we have to have a contiguous area, which is generally why homes were included. How many of you are homeowners? And others are business owners?
I'm with Park District.
You're with the Park District. We did invite the taxing districts to this meeting as well, we have to. Business owners, any business owners? Business owners. Mm-hmm. There's a couple people back here that cannot hear what you're saying. I don't know how you're gonna hear this, but maybe get somebody a microphone. So the reason that the village created this TIF district, or wants to create this TIF district, is so that they can assist with economic development projects, redevelopment of the downtown area. You have an old downtown area that has gone through a lot of cycles of ups and downs, and it needs to be rekindled, if you will. The determination that the TIF is a but-for, but-for the TIF, this can't happen, is how we came to this conclusion. We go through the area, we determine that there are several multiple criteria to determine that it is in fact an eligible TIF district. I can go through those if you like, or if you have questions, I can simply answer your questions. But what we wanted to do here was create a conservation area. There are multiple ways to create a TIF district in the state of Illinois. We did not want to go through, it's created as a blighted area, because it's a downtown area, and the goal here is to conserve the area, to redevelop it, but conserve it. So what we do is, we go through, in order to be a conservation area, 50% of your properties have to be 35 years or older. Well, we certainly got that. So then what the state, what the Act says is that you have to have three more criteria, and we actually have six. The most important one is that we have declining EAV three out of the last five years. We actually have it four out of the last five years. The area has not kept up with the CPI percentage, so that's another criteria. We have deterioration, obsolescence, we have inadequate utilities. So if development came in, the utilities, the infrastructure would not be adequate to handle the development. Those are the mechanisms by which we created this TIF district. Again, we have to have a contiguous area. The goals of the TIF are very simple, to redevelop the downtown area in a cohesive manner, utilizing TIF to assist development in the downtown area, your business owners, and development from the outside. The goal of the TIF is not to take property. As a matter of fact, the TIF plan that the village has implemented states that, there is not any taking of any plan. If your property taxes go up, which I'm sure they will, it's not as a result of the TIF. Can I answer any questions? Whoa, okay.
Do I have to state my name and stuff?
Please.
I believe you do. Okay, my name is Dale John Tomaso, I live at 200 East Corning Avenue, so my property is within the TIF district and adjacent to the CNN Railroad easement property. Why is the easement property incomplete part of the TIF? You know, it goes from basically, the whole map is showing that easement property is part of the TIF. I was wondering why that was.
It's one pin.
It's one pin.
That's one parcel.
Oh, so in other words, in order to do the middle of it, you have to do the whole?
County, we can't split a pin.
Okay.
We can split a pin, but it takes forever, and it's very difficult to split that type of pin.
Is that property owned by the village of Peatone, or by the railroad?
Railroad.
Railroad, okay. Thank you.
That's it?
That was my question.
Any other questions? Yes.
Would somebody have received a letter that's not in the map area?
Not a certified letter. They would have received a 750-foot letter informing them that the village of Peatone is considering adopting a TIF district, and that your property is within 750 feet of the boundaries. It is not in the TIF, but you are certainly entitled, and the letter goes on to state, you're certainly entitled to join us at the public hearing, blah, blah, blah.
What exactly will they do to the downtown, or has that been planned out?
No. What they want to be able to do here is use the TIF as a mechanism to market the downtown area to development. No specific plans, to my knowledge, have been put into place for the downtown area.
What kind of a hot percentage is there on something like that coming in that's a positive for the village? What, meaning, you say, how long do you think?
What are the odds that this will happen?
The odds that it turns out good.
Yowee. I wouldn't be here if I had to answer that.
The honest question is, that I think people-
How successful are TIF districts?
Is good money being dumped into something that may not be good in the long run? That's my question. So show me an example of another town or a village that has gone through this.
We just did a downtown TIF district in Oswego.
Okay.
Plainfield, Romeoville, Justice, a lot of downtown rehab TIF districts. The success of those that I listed were three-quarters have developed, very recent TIF districts also. Oswego, for instance, was adopted last year, and they have a very, very good development that they are working with, and they have negotiated. This is not an open-door policy here. I mean, you know, a developer has to come in and meet certain criteria that the village wants them. It's about the only incentive that municipalities have anymore.
I just have a question. What's the timeline? Do you have a timeline of when this is going to start?
Your name.
Mandy Abis, 209 O Second Street.
So when you say timeline, do you mean as far as the TIF is concerned?
Yeah.
Okay, so the last piece to this puzzle will be adoption. The municipality can't adopt the TIF district for two weeks after this meeting, or up to 90 days. Once they adopt it, the TIF can be in place for 23 years.
So that means constant development? Or does that mean a start date anywhere in that 23 years?
Well, sometimes what happens is a developer comes in, they negotiate, and maybe their development is going to take three years to develop, and they're going to need maybe 10 years of increment assistance, so now you're up to 13. Remember, we're always a year behind in collecting taxes too. So a lot of times what happens when you create a TIF, you see 23 years? That's kind of why they made it 23 years, to create the TIF, so it takes a while for it to get going. You get somebody in, it's going to be three years before you're going to collect anything.
Will there be a board that oversees this TIF, or will it be this board? And who would we go to if we have questions later on, since we live in the area?
Well, right now, to my knowledge, there isn't a specific board set up. It would be the village board at this point in time, and most questions or initial questions come to a village manager or administrator, and that communication goes. A lot of times, do you have an economic development commission?
Yes.
Part of the board?
But this particular TIF right now is going to be part of the board, because that was the board's wish, was to get the downtown up and moving.
Just trying to find out who we would go to if we had a question about something that's happening.
You're welcome to call my office anytime.
I'm standing.
And just communication from how it is developing, how it's progressing, how does that get communicated to?
Well, funny you should ask. The municipality had to adopt an Interested Parties Resolution, so what does that mean? That means that anybody who's interested in receiving information about the TIF at any point in time can sign up to receive that information. You're on that list for three years, whether you want to be or not.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Joe Billby, one resident. I don't live within the village limits right now, but I've been here all my life. I'm here with my mother-in-law, was a homeowner and commercial, built for commercial buildings, so we have questions. You mentioned before that, you know, property taxes would go up, but it's not because of TIF. Well, Peatone, you know, I mean, if you go to Mantino, you go to Moni, it's Frankfurt, go to any one of the small towns. Peatone used to be the big town, now it's a ghost town. It's a stark difference, you go into any one of these towns, you know, of what they have to offer, not only for industry, but for business. I just want to be sure that any tax incentive given to attract new business doesn't harm existing residents and commercial property owners. Is that your intention, to protect them? Are you going to give them, if they were to, say, upgrade their buildings, you know, commercial buildings, is there a tax incentive for that also?
Yes, sir, there is. This project is not exclusive to new development. This project is to redevelop what we already have also. And in TIF districts, what's really beneficial is that all rehab is eligible to receive, could be eligible to receive TIF incentives, whereas new development isn't. Brick and mortar is excluded from new development, which can be quite the project, so.
Sir, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. My name's Mike Darkin. I live about a block out of the TIF. My question is, what if you're a property owner in the TIF, and the TIF comes and recommends you make the front of your building or something, something maybe either you don't want, or you don't want to be involved in it, or any of that? Are you just out on the periphery? You're not forced to do anything?
You are not forced.
And if you're not forced to do anything, what is the advantage of having the TIF, and half the people don't do anything, and every other building keeps looking like it looks now? You know, I mean, there's a lot of, you used the word, didn't want to use the word "blight", but you might as well, there's a half a dozen down there that nobody would either purchase now or ever live in. I mean, I'm thinking that the TIF would be used to kind of help them update, you know, so the whole, as you drive into town, or you, we have all them parades and all them nice things downtown for Christmas, and then you go down, what is it, the street right in front of us here, and people coming in from out of town are like, how do these people live here? You know, you'd think they'd put some soap on the windows or something, so you didn't have to look in half these buildings. And I'm just saying, it doesn't seem to make sense to invest all this money if the same people who won't invest in their own buildings now aren't going to utilize it. You know, there's no hammer here, I guess, is what I'm saying. I mean, but what good are we going to do if three people want to use the TIF? I'm not sure where it helps us.
Well, we can't force.
Well, I understand, but I mean, is there a carrot out there?
Well, the carrot is dollars that are going to be available to redo, we're hoping. You know, the TIF is more of a peer pressure thing than a governmental hammer. We have to provide, right now, we can't provide any financial incentive to anybody doing anything downtown, and this is what gives us the tool to do that. We hope that if the guy next to the building that's being rehabbed all of a sudden pulls up to his one day and says, holy cow, they rehabbed their building, they got a tenant, they're collecting rent, I got an empty storefront, my building looks like hell, and I got nothing going on, let me call the village. That's your best hope. It's not anything that's going to happen overnight, and it's not anything that you're going to get, you know, and again, it's going to take some local reinvestment by people like yourself that may want to start a business or buy a building, that's going to really make this thing go, okay? And that's why the TIF is here, to help people like that get it going. One of the things we're going to do with the, we see it, sir, you may want to put your hand out, so hang on, hang on, hang on.
Is it state money? It's not village money, because the village has no money, because they have no business. So, you know, there's no business or industry, so we're using that to, you're trying to get new business to come in here so it can be like a normal town again?
Well, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Is it state money, or is there federal money also available?
There is no federal money.
Is it just tax, property tax incentive?
There is no, this is strictly on property tax. And the property tax is created by, the day you start the TIF, you have an EAV, equalized assessed value. That's your bottom line. That stays the same throughout the whole TIF. So whatever the library district was getting, or the school district was getting from that tax, on day one, they continue to get for the full 23 years. What we hope happens is that we create new business, taxes start to rise, because of the fact of new business, not just because the village decides, but because of the natural order of new business, the difference between that EAV and the new taxes, the incentive that we can reinvest back in the town. The village isn't going to take this money and buy new cars. I mean, they're going to reinvest that back into, you know, the whole plan of this thing is to reinvest, and legally too, by the way, is to reinvest it back into the town. So not only does it start in year one, we hope, and continue through year 10, but through year 23, because when you stop and think, 23 years is a very long time, and the first guy that comes in the door now, 23 years from now, is going to need some more rehab, and the increment will still be gathering. If we completely get, if we get a developer that comes in and completely buys it downtown and redoes the whole thing, and everybody's happy, and we never have another vacant, we can wind down the TIF and close it out in 10 years if that's the case, okay? Because we could always shut it down whenever. But that's why they give you 23 years, because like Mary said, it takes a while to get things going. But it's not federal money, it's not state money, it's local property tax that makes this happen.
Well, maybe we should, maybe we should back up.
Both commercial and homes is very high at Peatone for getting very little. You know, hopefully this is going to help, you know, get it to the point where people feel good paying their taxes, because they're actually getting something. You know, like I said before, the difference between here and going to Mantino or Moni, you know, looking at their-
Well, Mantino's taxes are higher than yours, and Mantino has a TIF in their downtown, and that's how they did it.
Have they done a TIF?
They've done a TIF, and that's how they're spending the money.
Tinley Park.
So, Tinley Park, same way.
And have any-
Allon Park, the same way. Allon Park has a huge TIF.
You ever been to Homewood? That Homewood downtown area was one of the first TIF districts created, and they did an incredible job with their downtown. And they did have specific offerings. They offered exterior rehab, 50%, but yes, you did have to follow the way they wanted it done. And they had a ton of participants to do that, a ton. You know, maybe we should take a step back and talk about how the TIF works. Greg mentioned your EAV is established at a certain level. This TIF district has established, the base EAV, equalized assessed valuation within this area, is 4.7. So what happens? Next year, it goes up to 5.7. That 4.7, as Greg said, continues to go to all of the distribution of all the various taxing districts. Now we have an extra million here. Extra, we have an additional million here. That million comes back to the village into a special tax allocation fund to be used within the TIF district only, for TIF eligible expenses only. So it's public-private. The village needs new sidewalks, the village wants to do new infrastructure. The developer comes in and they want to buy a building. All of those things can be utilized with that million dollars. So as taxes go up in the district, that increment, whether it be attrition or through a new development, comes back into this special fund.
So I have a question. Because I live in the TIF district, there will be a percentage of my taxes going into that, correct?
Everybody's in town.
Okay. Well, no, it's everybody in the district, right?
Not only if, only the increase of the taxes.
No, I mean, I'm still paying more in taxes, I get all that, but that difference is going to go into that fund?
That special fund.
Okay. To be spent only in that bordered area that you saw-
Right.
-with the railroad and all. That's the only place that can be spent. So we can't take money out of the TIF district and go over on 50 and build a building-
Right.
-or build a village hall, or build, whatever, you know what I'm saying? We can't use money from the TIF to do that. We have to keep the money-
Downtown.
Downtown.
Downtown, to be used on only TIF eligible costs. The other thing that's important to note about the TIF Act is that if nothing occurs in seven years, it has to be done wrong.
It has to be what?
It has to be terminated.
Yeah, so you own property in the TIF, and you fix up your building, how do you pay that money back? Or do you just pay a portion of that money back, or you pay all the money back?
So what happens is, depending on what you do, the village would call on someone like me, or me, maybe, to do an estimate of what that improvement is going to bring in, in increment, in increased taxes. I mean, we all know, you take out a building permit, you make improvements, your taxes are probably going to go up. So then we utilize that increase from your improvement to negotiate with you.
Negotiate what?
A TIF deal. So he needs assistance. He comes in and says, I want to do this, but I can't do it without some help. They look at what he's going to generate and negotiate, see whether or not it's worth it.
And that's prior to the work starting.
Oh, yes. Don't touch the dirt. Don't put the shovel to the ground before you have your deal. Everything, every incentive you ever hear about, whether it's TIF, sales tax, the old incentives you deck, but for assistance, you can't do it.
I have a question. Obviously hoping to bring in developers, business, new business into the town, into the downtown area, how is, I mean, someone's not just going to wake up one morning and say, I want to go and make a business in Peatone, so how is that going to happen?
Do you want to address that, Greg?
Yeah, sure. One of the things we're doing right now, is we've negotiated with, we've sat down, and there's three towns that have actually gone in on this, and we're still working on the semantics of it, but Beecher, and Whole City, and us are looking at, we've gotten with Olivet University, to do an entrepreneur U, because we all have similar situated downtowns. We have a lot of vacant buildings, a lot of older buildings, and quite frankly, we're not situated in an area where Gap, you know, Mariano's, they're not, we're 4,100 people. They're going to come in here and they're going to say, how many people do you have in town? We're going to say, 4,100 people, and they're going to say, have a nice day, okay? So we're not going to chase that particular, we'll always chase those people, because you know, a blind squirrel finds a nut now and then, but we want to reinvest in the area. So one of the things we want to do is an entrepreneur U, because we feel that in our own towns, we have people that want to do businesses. Either A, don't have the financial wherewithal to do it, or the expertise to do it, or are afraid to do it. In other words, how do I hire a lawyer? What kind of lawyer do I look for? I mean, lawyers are, they do a lot of different things. We have village attorneys, we have ambulance chasers, we have, you know, litigants, we have, I mean, we have a lot of different types of attorneys. Do I need an accountant? Or if I don't need an accountant, what kind of a program do I use to do my accounting? My suppliers. So we've talked with Olivet University's business department, and they're working on a program with their graduate students to come in and put together a program, get eligible people, so what's eligible? Well, people that A, have an idea first of all, and how do we help you develop that idea? And then use the TIF as a catalyst to get you into a rented space downtown, give you some assistance to start, or give the landlord some assistance to start, because quite frankly, we can only help you to a certain extent, if you don't own the building. Give the landlord some assistance to start, and hopefully you folks come together and not only A, start businesses in town, okay? And we need a lot of things. We need seamstresses, we need a shoe store, we need, I mean, the list goes on. We get the local people to do some things, okay? And then we have, then the biggest challenge after that is, because we'll find people to do things, the biggest challenge after that is to get the local people to support you, okay? And how do you get support? Well, you get support by A, being the expert in your business, and that's where the Olivet all comes in and out. So, I mean, if there's a dream for the downtown TIF, that's it, we'd all local people, and you'll be quite surprised, as you grow, you'll bring in outsiders that'll want to do restaurants, theme restaurants, you know, different things than locals can or want to do. So that's the idea. You're welcome.
I have a question. I'm Jim Butler, and I'm, for homeowners, so if you want to do some remodeling on your house, can you get some assistance with that too?
No.
No.
Good try. Good try.
Nice to have you.
What about the sidewalks and the streets?
It depends on, right now it's going to concentrate on the downtown district. I mean, the sidewalks and the streets are still a village purview, and they will be working on those as they go along. The fact that we don't have to spend general fund money on the downtown portion of that might help get more sidewalks and streets done as we go along through the program.
Greg.
Yeah.
When you say downtown, is it that whole darkened area?
Yes.
Or is it just Second Street?
It's a whole darkened area.
Just making sure.
Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler. Also, Mr. Butler, we wanted to link the school in, so we can actually, if the TIF district is successful, we can move money to the school, and they can do infrastructure improvements as well.
Yep, capital improvements.
Capital improvements, so.
Yes.
I have a question. With the residential taxes, as it people, the residential, all of Piattum, all of the 4,100, or whatever, how many homes we have now, they are, all those residential home taxes will be helping to pay this back?
No.
I don't understand something. It's almost like they're penalizing those people that live within the TIF. That's what I mean. I kind of feel that way for other people.
We're not penalizing.
Well, I'm not in it.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm not in it. I'm just saying, it just seems like if that was bordered off, that's for just that area. I mean, I don't want anybody to get ticked at me about everybody's taxes going up. Mine are high enough. But I mean, I just don't understand.
The residential.
Like, if he lives within the TIF area, he's only, like, say he's a half a block within, okay? Why should his taxes be higher than mine? Because I'm benefiting from the area.
But they're not going to be higher than yours. His taxes are going to go up attritionally the same as yours are going to go up. His taxes are not going to go up because of the TIF district.
I see what you're saying. Any tax raises will be because of coming, school fire, or whatever.
Yes. The only difference, the only difference is, his increase, because we had to include him in the, in the area, that increase that you sustained and he sustained, his increase comes back into the special fund, yours is.
How does that work on his income tax when he?
No, 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 no.
No change.
Does it affect his income tax?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nope.
Still plan it the same way you always do?
Yep. All really good questions.
Yes, sir.
Ron Leclerc, 108 East Crawford. I believe that some of the downtown section is in a register of historic places or something like that. How does that affect what can be done with those properties?
Well, I don't think that they are.
Yeah, so there are, there were, there.
Are they? How many?
It was designated a historic district, Peter, help me with this, a historic district, but it didn't.
It doesn't restrict that.
It doesn't restrict that. It's not like a national landmark status.
I was just going to say, I thought we clarified.
That's what I'm wondering, because sometimes they have something to say with how your exterior is maintained.
And we probably will have an architectural plan for the downtown, is one of the things we'll look at, and it will probably more than likely stick with the historical aspect of it, because really, quite, the way it looks now, except for old, is not bad. Okay? And it may be enough, charming enough to do the historical plan on that. But it's not on the national register or anything where it says we absolutely can't do that. So we can't do anything, make any changes, so.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Personally, I would prefer to see it stay the way it is, only enhance. That's, but that's just me. Yes, ma'am?
I have several questions. My name's Barb Sim, and I live in town Piattum, and I'm also in Park District 4. So the TIF, I wanted to be clear on the financial part of it, as far as the park is concerned. My question to the village board is, do we have a plan in place of what your vision is for this area? Or are we just developing a TIF district and let's see what happens?
You have your comprehensive plan?
Mm-hmm.
We have a comprehensive plan that the village does, and that's part of it. And then, quite frankly, what the board will do after the TIF passage, because doing anything prior to the TIF passage is moot, they'll sit down as a group and decide the direction that they allow us to do, to pursue for the TIF district. So it will be completely part of what their vision and what their plan is for downtown.
So, I'm just going to say this. I've lived in town for 14 years. Why hasn't there been a comprehensive plan?
There is a comprehensive, and there has been.
To the changes on the downtown area? You know, why?
Well, they have, there's an overall village comprehensive plan, and quite frankly, in your last 14 years, eight of those have been depression.
Well.
Business depression.
Here's my question. You know, with the vacancy in the buildings, what is the board doing with landowners, property owners in that area to bring new development in? I mean, the TIF isn't going to be the magic pill. It's going to solve it all.
It's a financial tool, is all it is. It's a bullet in the gun. It's all it is. The only thing we can do is put it out there and provide it. That does not mean that anybody's going to be successful with it. That's why they, they kill them after seven years if they're not successful.
Keep doing trade shows, though.
And we will, we will.
Continue, you will continue to do that.
Again, we're not going to attract nationals.
I, you know, quite honestly.
You have to attract local.
We're not a town that's going to support nationals.
No, it doesn't. In fact, the downtown has a hard time supporting locals.
Right.
Okay? So that's what we have, that's the point we have to get to, is to support, and we have to get locals, whether it's here or another person living close by that wants to come into town and do a business, get them interested in the downtown landlords. Now that we have a financial tool to work with, we can sit down and we can actually negotiate with them on rents and things like that. Until this point, we had nothing. I mean, we would only walk in there and say, "Please."
So if the TIF does not go through, will this comprehensive plan be gone?
No, the comprehensive plan, you will always have a comprehensive plan. It's two different.
So there's no change to the current comprehensive plan?
Two different things.
No. Right. The TIF, there is a TIF plan, and it kind of follows the comprehensive plan. The Act says we have to create a TIF plan, which sets out general, the general goals and objectives of the TIF, and what the village sees for, for the TIF district. And it has a budget within it as well. So it has a max budget, doesn't mean, it's a 23-year budget, so I mean, it's set high enough so that we don't have to come back and do this process again, because if it wasn't, you would have to redo the whole thing again. And then there's an eligibility report. The TIF plan states within it that it is done in conjunction with the village's comprehensive plan, which was played in a.
The comprehensive plan dates from 2006.
Thank you.
And it's a village-wide document expressing a kind of.
Is that constantly updated?
Yes.
I don't know.
2009, there was a minor update.
Yeah, they should, they should be refreshed from time to time, so it's always good to take a look at them, and that's something that we could do. But as Greg mentioned, if, you know, 2006 and shortly thereafter, you see things kind of get tougher economically, so things have kind of, it's, for plans that were adopted around that time, it's been hard to execute of it. But I know that as part of this, it was looked at, what were the ideas for the comprehensive plan? What was the vision for the downtown?
Correct.
And that was, the TIF plan is helping to build on that.
So it's a plan that was actually developed in 2006, which was 11 years ago, 12 years ago? And it's been slightly modified once?
Well, a comprehensive plan is, is a village-wide document, it's a planning document that kind of just looks at the whole state of the village, what are your zoning designations, what do you anticipate the direction of the village in terms of residential growth, commercial growth, what areas should be concentrated on? And again, for commercial areas, it's been very difficult to get a lot of economic footing, and the TIF is one of those tools that can help to execute the comprehensive plan vision. Any other questions?
I have two more, sorry. I'll probably think of more when I'm done with those two. On the EAV, you're saying it's like 4.7 now? As an example, you said possibly 5.7. You're talking about the tax allocation fund. I mean, that was just kind of a maybe if.
Yes, yes.
Okay? What's the highest EAV has ever been? How far can it go? How high can it go?
Well, the, we actually have to do a scenario for the TIF eligibility report, and we based it on attrition and redevelopment of two major developments, and then four subdevelopments. And we anticipated that it would go up to 18.
Could go up to 18.
Mm-hmm.
And what, in the TIF area, if, when the developers come in, you're saying developers would come in, and they could come in, buy up the whole.
Or locals, or local owners.
Or a local owners, or as a whole. What does that mean with the business owners that are there now, or would come in, the day they want to sell, or they rent their building out, or whatever? How does that affect them? Any difference, any changes, if they want to do that?
If they want to sell their building?
Right, after the TIF is in.
After the TIF is in. Well, that is an eligible cost, just so you know.
Such as?
So if I came in to buy your building.
Right.
And I knew what I wanted to put in your building, and it, it pleased the village with respect to what they wanted to see happen in the downtown area, and then I furthermore asked for some assistance, the site acquisition could be an eligible cost that I would negotiate for.
Okay, so.
Not all of it. I think it's important to know that it's not going to be at 100%.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doc. Yeah, that's what I mean. Okay, so in other words, after the TIF is in, say a business owner updates and develops it and everything, makes it better. Did you have a question, or was I interrupting?
No.
Never mind. No, I thought somebody said something over here.
No.
And then after it's all done, and then that particular business owner wants to sell or rent their building? That is okay that that happens. There's no, there's no stop from that owner, that business owner, either renting their property out or being able to sell.
Correct.
That's, that's what I, that was the question.
Hurry up, she's adding up some more questions.
No, I'm just, okay, so we all know there's business, there's gentlemen in this, not in this room, that own property in this TIF district. And my guess is they would have no intention of selling their buildings. Okay? So they're going to be looking for renters to come into their property. So if I, as a business owner, meaning I own my business, I don't own the property, or bring a business into the TIF district, put it in a storefront, who benefits from the TIF? The building owner or the business owner?
It's the building owner.
The building owner benefits from the TIF. Could benefit from the TIF, not necessarily. I mean, it's not a slam dunk that everybody gets it.
So how do we bring new businesses in? Is it up to then, the building owner, to give them some kind of incentive to the renters?
That would be the hope, yes. That would be the hope.
We don't dictate what they do. In fact, we can't do anything for those two building owners.
Would be up to the building owner.
But if, but if somebody comes in and wants to rent your building again, now they want to rent it, but they need a build-out, and the landlord wants to provide that build-out, he could get assistance to do the build-out.
But the landlord, they have to do the build-out.
Right, because they own the building. They, they own the town.
Well, not necessarily, because I, certain businesses, it's on the renter to do their own build-outs.
I, not disputing that. What I'm saying is if they want to bring a renter in and they want to help them with the build-out, the landlord would have to make the application and pay for the build-out.
Right.
Okay? They also benefit from the build-out, because if you fail, they have a built-out spot.
Right.
Okay? So that's, that's the, again, a but for, and a TIF, is the building owner is the one that gets the funds, because they're the ones that are either going to lose or benefit from it.
So the TIF funds start a year later.
Well, the next tax.
Taxes and arrears, correct?
They, well, yes.
From day one, if, if someone comes in today and says, "We approve this in two weeks," and somebody comes in and says, "I'm going to rent this, we want to build out," where's the money come from? Because that money hasn't been allocated for.
They may have to front the money, and then they can be reimbursed.
That's exactly right.
We have 23 years to reimburse them.
Right. What we're doing here is what we call pay-as-you-go. We're not, we're not issuing any debt to do this rehab or to do any, any development. So pay-as-you-go means, as your taxes are paid, you'll get reimbursed. So as soon as occupancy occurred, occurs, the tax bills come in, a redevelopment agreement is entered into, for a certain percentage of money going back to whomever, that's how it works.
Have the property owners, the commercial property owners been approached, doing, have a feeling of whether they're on board and doing improvements to their property, or looking for new renters?
We've talked to several property owners that are on board, and there's some that aren't, because they don't understand the TIF. So again.
So some buildings will remain the same, because the property owners?
I guarantee it temporarily. Because when they see improvements going on and somebody else cashing a check, they're going to want a check to cash. That's how this happens. This happens because of mon, listen, there's no magic pill here, this happens because of money. Okay? And the money that the landowner in this downtown finally will get to realize, rather than have to go in there and watch their building stay vacant and still pay taxes on it, is they have that opportunity to reinvest in their building and make money, again. That's what we hope happens. If they don't want to do it, then we really hope they sell it. Okay? So then the new guy, well, I guarantee you, will want to do something. Because there's no benefit in a TIF to sit there with a vacant building. None. They won't, we don't write them checks just because they're there. It doesn't happen that way. And if we do a redevelopment agreement with somebody, it's lawyer to the max, so it's a legal document. So they got, they got rules that they got to follow, and we have rules that we have to follow. And if they don't follow the rules, they don't get the money. That's, that's the bottom line of this thing. The village, instead of going to the taxpayers and saying, "Let's do a referendum and give us another percent on the sales tax," or "Give us another percent on your property tax, so we can reinvest in the downtown," is saying to the residents, "We're not bothering you with this thing. All we're telling you is we're going to do a TIF, we're hoping that the downtown grows, and we're going to reinvest that money." Period. I mean, it's a win-win for everybody if it's supported by the people of the town. And Homewood, the examples that we've given you, there's some that'll never do well, and there's a lot of them that do. Mantino's done very well with theirs, but they still have some empty spots.
Tinley Downtown.
Homewood. Tinley Park has done two major downtown redevelopments out of their TIFs.
My concern with the towns that you mentioned is they have a lot of other commercial support for the town to bring, because you're, you're a town of 4,100 people. And you're, now we're going to say to these citizens, you need to support, which I agree with, you need to support these downtown businesses. But they may or may not do that.
That's correct.
So, those towns that you talk about, Homewood, Tinley, they don't have 4,100 people in those towns, and they've got a huge commercial base, and the village still needs that. So, outside of the TIF district, what are we doing on the commercial side?
We're still working.
How are we going to bring people in?
You have 4,100 people. I'll ask you the question. How do I do that?
What could have been done within the last 10 years?
Doing what?
Commercially. What have we turned down in this town under George Gray that went that way?
I haven't turned anything down. I don't know what happened in the previous administration.
I said within the last 10 years.
I don't know what happened in the previous administration, but I've looked at it, and I haven't turned, in fact, I've talked to some of those people.
So, getting back to the TIF, though, I mean, what's the negative? I mean, I don't understand, we're trying to do something that's going to reinvest money in the village without really increasing anybody's taxes. It's been something that people have been asking about, you know, why can't we fix up the downtown area? Well, this is a mechanism that, you know, we're going to be able to use. I mean, you know, who knows how, we don't know how successful it's going to be, but if we don't try it, we're not going to know. So, I mean, the only negative is, you know, maybe the park district doesn't get a little bit of the, you know, they don't get their cut, the school district doesn't get theirs, but, you know, we're all in this together, and we, you know, if it's successful, that makes everybody's, you know, home value go up and property value. So, I just don't, you know, there's a lot of great questions, and the TIF, you know, it's hard to wrap your mind around it, it took me a while, but this is something that, you know, it's just so hard to develop that downtown without offering some kind of carrot to the building owner. So, I just think it's something that we need to try, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, it's not like we've spent money that we've collected from the residents at all, so.
I just have, I just want to make a comment. He mentioned before, some of the businesses downtown are for it and some not, they don't understand the TIF. Maybe it would be a good idea if some of our trustees or people that know well, maybe you, Mary, that know about the TIF. First of all, I want you to know, I'm for it. I think it's a great idea. I think for, I've been here 40 years, and I saw that downtown go down every year. I mean, it's sad what used to be there when we first moved in. And I'm sure people that have been here longer have seen more, but maybe those that aren't sure because they don't understand what it's about, maybe those are the ones that we, as the ones that are here that do understand it, need to kind of, not target, but talk to the people that don't understand it. Anybody that's willing to listen and understands it layman's terms, I can't see them not being for it. You know, so, maybe that's what needs to be done, is brother to brother and sister to sister, and explain it that way, because I do think it's a great idea. And like Pete said, that's what we've been looking at for how many years, when is something going to be done to that downtown? And Piattone was better than Mantino. Look at them.
Yes, I agree.
Everybody wanted to be here, and now, I remember 20 years ago, people moving south, they went to Mantino, left their homes here. So, we've got to do something, because I love this town, and I know these people care about it, because they're here.
Well, they're here, right.
You know, we should have had standing room only here tonight. But I think it's a great idea, and any way that I can help by spreading the word from what I understand from tonight, I certainly will, and I think everybody here feels the same.
Well, I'm happy to give everybody my card, my number. I'm available.
I think it's a good idea.
My information was on the information you received. And, you know, a lot of times, candidly, people get certified mail and the word "taxes" on it, and they do anything except show up immediately.
Toss it.
So, well, they do. And some of them don't even take it, and they just don't want a certified mail. But I do want to tell you that this municipality is going to take a, there's a two-pronged approach here, and there's probably five, but we're going to talk about two, and it's what you discussed. But the fact of the matter is, is that developers are very familiar with TIF, and they know what can happen in a TIF district. And there are specific developers that do downtown development, and those are who we want to go after also, because you want to spur the competition here between them and the locals.
As part of this TIF, and I've worked on TIF buildings in Chicago, and there were requirements that the builders had to use.
Yes.
Like, use some local people and stuff. Is anything like that going to be implemented?
You know, to the scale that this town is, that would be extremely difficult.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you have to have minority vendors, you have, if you work in Chicago, you know what it is.
Yeah.
You have to have a green, you have to have leads, you have to have green, you have to have a tree that's a certain width in front of your building.
Right.
You know, let's get this started first.
No, no, I didn't mean lead or anything. I understand a lot of lead. I've done a lot of lead work. I'm just talking about, like, say, saying, like, "Look, we have an electrical contractor in town. It would be really nice if you used them."
Well, now, they certainly will be saying that, and they have some...
You know what I'm saying, or stuff like that.
Yeah, we always ask that they use as many local vendors as we can.
But there's not going to be a prove-up of how many minority vendors you're using.
No, 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 I was just, as a negotiating tactic, when they come in asking for money, you can kind of go, well, you know...
I can tell you, the first guy in the door probably isn't going to get asked a whole bunch of that, because we need somebody to be the...
Right, to be the guinea pig.
But I don't, I have no, I have no shame in asking anybody that, if you can use a local vendor, please do.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think that's going to be the thing that's really going to get the thing moving, because it's going to, economic development in one way.
We have a lot, we have, if they're registered with the village.
Yeah.
That's what you want.
But the biggest thing is with the TIF is they have to use prevailing wage.
Right, yep.
So, that's a benefit to any of the local workers that they may hire.
Exactly.
So, any other questions?
I've got one last one. For, like, a nonprofit organization such as the American Legion, I've got to ask this because I'm a senior vice, can we also use that, too, for projects?
They're a nonprofit, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, well, actually, they can't on their building because they pay no tax.
Pay no taxes.
Yeah. There wouldn't be a whole lot of increment there for you to play with, because you pay no tax on your building.
Well, I think...
If you're paying tax on your building, if you're, then that's a whole different discussion that we'll have to have. But if you're, as a strict nonprofit, you typically don't pay property tax, and if there's no property tax, there's no increment for you. So, yeah. Any other questions?
Park District considered nonprofit?
Or not nonprofit, but it's on tax exempt.
They're tax exempt.
Tax exempt.
Or government body. How does that work? Is that the same as the Legion, then, or...
No, we're a government body.
No, they're government bodies, government bodies don't...
So, government bodies are able to use the TIF?
No, no, government bodies are going to be restricted from any, from the increase in the taxes, and that's, I'm assuming that's why you're here.
Yeah.
And occasionally, sometimes developers donate some property to Park District as well.
Would there be any, in the future, expansion of the TIF to get more, to get more revenue?
Expansion...
Of the TIF zone?
Boundaries, the boundaries.
It's a possibility, I mean, it depends on the success.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the bigger it gets, the more...
So, sort of success would come where we're located here, we've got housing all the way around, a lot of people would want to have to sell their house to expand the TIF district, so.
So, if you're successful at the downtown area, you might want to do something on Route 50 or...
We definitely want to do something on Route 50, and we definitely want to do something on I-57 that's got nothing to do with the downtown TIF.
That would be a separate TIF.
But when developers come to see you, to come to see us, they drive through that.
Right.
Okay? So, that really is our front door.
Yeah.
Okay? And we need that to look right and good to get developers to say, "We want to be in Piattone because look what they did with their," they want business. That's the main thing. That's why that, that's why the downtown TIF is so important to start off with. Any other questions?
So, anybody be able to walk into the village, like, whether she's a building owner and stuff, or say if I wanted to start a business, to get, walk in here and get information that we need to apply for?
What you do is you stop up at the front desk and fill out a form, and in the form, you put you on the list, and you'll get information as it comes out.
What has been the cost to the village so far? I mean, there's costs involved with the TIF study.
It runs about, it runs about $20,000. However, I got a grant for $16,500.
I know, my husband's fear-hearted of that.
Yep.
So...
So, yeah, so we got lucky, and we got, you know, more than 80% of it paid for, and that's a good thing. The next TIF, we won't be so lucky on, but that's okay.
But I am a TIF-eligible cost.
Yeah, she's also a TIF-eligible cost.
So, as increment comes in, they can pay themselves back.
Right. And lawyer fees and, you know, all the way down the line, it's TIF-eligible cost to reimburse the village. But again, you got to spend a little, get old. Anybody else? Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have any, are there any written comments that you received?
Thank you. I have not seen any unless they will put in the envelope.
No, I have not, no.
But before everybody leaves, if you haven't, print your name on the sheet up there so I can spell everybody's name right, please.
We need a motion for adjournment. Second, my trustee Bowden.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. March?
Yes.
Ms. Bowden? Ms. Han?
Yes.
Ms. Hax?
Yes.
Our president. Ms. March? Ms. Smith, Ms. March?